So he got tied up somewhere, but it's supposed to be here.
Yeah.
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 Thanks.
Oh.
I'm merely.
Had to be.
Yeah.
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 So Jeff has to be secretary.
He.
Okay, Jeff is secretary.
Is this?
I'll secretary.
There's these segmics there.
I'll save her.
Yeah.
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 Yeah. Right, so.
I intend it.
Yeah. Yeah.
Public hearing.
Town and Postacail Planning Board Meeting for June 3rd, 2025, now in session. Please rise for your subjects.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda, meeting minutes from May 6th. Board had time to review. Yes, yes. Any comments, alterations, suggestions? You feel that? No? That's it, good. It's good? I'm good. But we can't. We can't. We can't. We can't. From May 6th meeting. Have a motion to approve, Diana, second?
Me, gee?
All second.
Second, all favor? Aye. Oppose?
Abstained.
Abstained.
And two abstaineds. Prove the minutes as written. Resuscitation of public hearing. Public hearing. Town and Postacail. For the Frank Hunter and Chester Alpaca Snake Hill Road Minor Subdivision. Want to? Large Frank Hunter. You want me to read it? You can read, yeah, actually.
Yeah, stop me.
You should read it. You're gonna read the.
You want me to read the notice?
Wait, one sec, hearing, public hearing notice.
Okay. Notice is hereby given that a public hearing will be held by the planning board for the Town of Postacail at 7:00 PM on Tuesday, June 3rd, 2025, at the Postacail Town Hall, 38 Davis Drive, Postacail, New York, 214th Ave., to review its minor subdivision application submitted by Frank Hunter and Chester Alpaca for property located on Snake Hill Road, north of Heather Ridge Road. Copies of the application supporting documents are available to Town, Postacail Town Hall, and are available for public inspection during regurgitations and hours. On this party will be heard at the public hearing.
Thank you. Sir, can you state who you are? And? Hunter Ferro, I'm the applicant on the subdivision.
I'm John John Lanceler from Rensselaar.
Okay. So you want to describe what you're going to.
Well, we, uh, parcel on Snake Hill Road was divided into, uh, the road cut the property in half, basically. And this was a separate, uh,
Lot two.
Description in their, in, uh, in, in the PAFASD. So we would like to break it, break it in half. One side of the road and this side of the road.
Okay.
All the property on this side of the road is going to be sold to Hunter.
Okay, that's lot two.
Yes.
Okay.
And that's on.
That's it.
It's on the east side in the room, right?
Yep.
Yeah.
Anybody want the map?
Yeah, we have. I think we all have maps. Board have any questions related to this? No?
It was a separate parcel at one time, and then when he purchased it, he combined it all in one D.
Okay.
So we're just reversing the process.
Guys, so the public hearing is open. You guys want to take a seat for a second?
Sure.
See if anybody in the public has any comments? Anyone from the public who'd like to make a comment on this minor subdivision? Come forward, state your name.
Linda Greglere, um, my property, bought that property. I'm curious what they're going to do with that property. Like, I mean, I know when Alpaca bought it, he bought it because the gentleman who owned that property decided to clear how he didn't have what was needed, town shut them down. They were all looking arms because he wanted to do development across the street. And he bought it. It's going to be forever lands, forever. Um, so I'm just curious what their intent is? How much development they plan on doing? What, you know, they're, um, you know, are they going to clear the whole mountain? I mean, already there's one guy that's tied up up there. There's a square cut. Um, and I know rumor has rumors, I'm not going to go into rumors. I don't know for fact. But, um, you know, what, what exactly is the intent? How much land are they going to clear? Um, how is that going to affect the houses that sit below some of the land that's behind those homes?
Fair question. Does anybody?
Uh, not at this moment, no, I'm just, I'm, I'm buying the land because I want the land, I enjoy the land, I'm just, just doing land purchase, I'm not, you know, nothing, nothing at this time.
But what, you've got to have something that.
Well, everybody has something that they might want to do, but at, at this time, no. In the future, I don't know what the future holds, nobody does. So it'd be, it could be anything, but again, if that ever happens, we would come back to the planning for, the planning board, and, you know, you could come again, and nothing at this time.
I mean, I'm not trying to be squeaky wheel, but I'm just really happy to relate, you know?
I've been in my home thirty years, and, you know, I've, I've had the luxury of enjoying the wildlife and so on and so forth, so,
you know, I just want to, you know, I'm not against, you know, whatever, but I just would like to have an idea of what the thought processes are and the fact that.
We can assure you, it's going to be only between you and I.
One note, any future development would have to come before the board again anyway, so we're just looking at providing this in the two pieces.
Sorry, to build a house, he wouldn't have to come.
You may ask her before the board again.
All right, to build a single family house. Well, let me see that.
The subdivision process, I'd love to do with what we're going to do with the property in the future. Uh, this is just permission to sell it. Any, uh, degrees, we don't have to give any, uh, indication of what we're going to do with the property at all. We can add to anything with it, might need, as far as I know, right now, it's an investment. If he wants to build a house here, he has to come before the planning board. So, uh, what he's going to do, that has no bearing on the issue here of selling this piece of property legally.
I, that's, that was my question, sir, I just want to know, you know?
Yes, it's, it was, it's a fair question. You live next door, I, I've asked the same question, so.
Thank you, thank you for allowing me to first, thank you for.
Oh, yeah. And we can assure you again, again, of course, we're not developers. But will something happen in the future there? Possibly, possibly true, yes. But not for us to get you out of time. And I can assure you, I live up to ninety on the top of the ridge. And, and I lived there for twenty years, I lived in the town of Postacail my whole life. And I'm.
You live on Quay?
I live on, uh, the top of, uh, High Metal Road. And we own a bunch of property around there. And we haven't done much with our property at all in the, in the last twenty years. So we're not, we're not, we won't invade your space, I promise you that in front of the whole committee, it's not going to happen.
Yeah, I'm just curious what you're going to do with it, uh, you know, I do enjoy watching the deer, I do enjoy watching the turkey.
Hundred percent.
I enjoy watching the deer running from my car.
And, and so, and so, and so do we, so do we.
So, that's all.
And we are, we respect our neighbors, and I, again, I assure you, we won't do anything, if we would do something to offend it, we have a conversation first to mitigate it. If, it's not going to happen.
Like I said, I'm not trying to be a squeaky wheel, I'm more of a curiosity, and like I said, I've owned my home for thirty years.
We respect the question.
We bought a house that was totally run down, and my husband and I.
Now, I know where you live, I mean, you might see us walking all the way around your house, your property to do all the surveying. You put a couple new pins in, you might see some flags there, but we're not trying to invade your space.
No, I didn't.
Yeah.
Just, just one point of clarification, though. If they wanted to put a single family home on this piece of property, they wouldn't have to come back to the board.
And that's.
Anything beyond that, they would have to come back to the board?
No, just like.
I just wanted to clarify, so.
Thank you.
Okay. Yes, okay.
Enjoy.
So any other comments? Other comments? Motion to close, make a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll leave that.
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye. Oppose? No. Public hearing is closed.
Pardon? Yeah, I was a little late, I'm a good man. No, not a problem.
Okay, keep up here. Okay. Secret. Do I have to do the, uh, short about this environmental assessment form, part two? You've already completed the first part. So, will a pro's action create a material conflict with the adopted land use planners or new regulations?
No.
Will a pro's action result in a change in the use or intensity of use of land?
No.
No. Will the pro's action impair the character or quality of the existing community?
No.
Will the pro's action have an impact on the environmental characteristics that caused the establishment of a critical environmental area?
No.
Will the pro's action result in adverse change in the existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit, biking or walkway?
No.
Will the pro's action cause an increase in the use of energy? And it fails to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities?
Oh, no.
Will the pro's action impact the existing public, private water supplies?
No.
No public, private waste or treatment?
No.
Will the pro's action impair the character or quality of important historical archaeological, architectural, or aesthetic resources?
No.
Will the pro's action result in adverse change in natural resources?
No.
Will the pro's action result in increase in the potential for erosion of land or drainage?
No.
Will the pro's action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health?
No.
Does the action exceed any type one threshold in NYCRR part two? No.
No.
Will the action receive coordinated review? No. No. Uh, where are we? Could the action result in any adverse effects associated with the following? Existing air quality? No. So none of these? Will the project have an impact on environmental characteristics that cause the establishment of a critical environmental area?
No.
Is there, or is there likely to be a controversy related to potential adverse environmental impacts?
No.
So this is a negative deck, right? I'm getting motion, I'm getting one.
I'll make a motion.
I have a motion to.
For negative declarationist.
Negative declaration, Diana, second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Negative declaration? Does board have any other questions? They do this subdivision? I have a motion to approve this subdivision?
I'm making.
Steve makes the motion approved. I'll give you some seconds, all in favor? Aye. Oppose? None. Subdivision is approved.
Excellent. Thank you. Thanks, I appreciate it.
I'll be answering your questions, I'll be your regulations.
Okay.
Can you mail a manual again, just bring it up to.
Yes. With the staff?
They, um, if you want to bring your ass in, you're going to need.
Can I do them?
And then we'll see.
Okay.
And.
Looks like there's some there, we'll figure out, we'll figure out how many are there.
I think there's six there.
Okay.
Do you need more? Five per second.
Four.
What the Russell, five more?
Five more.
Five more. We'll take care of that.
And then we'll see.
Why you, I'll bring off my seal and I'll print it out to you. Uh, when can I deliver them?
I'll be here late, later, so, maybe tomorrow, and then, um, probably Monday.
I mean, so.
So Monday, Tuesday, I'll be here.
Okay, so that's probably when I'll come back, uh, would be Monday.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah. I'll try to get your regulations.
Thank you very much.
And I want you to know.
Okay. Okay. Yep, sounds good. Thanks, Ford.
Bye, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very nice.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good.
So I, I'm.
Okay, next item on the agenda is the applicant, Tom McTesto, 153 Alpaca Beach Road, submitted a minor subdivision application, this lot in three lots. Currently has eight point four seven acres. Looking to split his house off and make two lots, one for each of his boys. Who's here to represent this?
I. Tom McTesto, right.
Okay. You want to explain, grab your maps there.
Basically, what we originally bought in nineteen ninety-three, we bought this lot here.
Okay.
Which was, we did separate, we have two point two acres. And then in nineteen ninety-nine, we bought six point four three acres.
Like you.
Four two acres, yeah. That would be this one here.
Okay.
Which at the time, when I bought it, they just basically did a boundary extension, I believe, is all they did.
Yeah, boundary line adjustment.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So all we want to do is just split it right down the middle, which comes out basically three point two one acres. And, boy, is, we bought it in ninety-nine with the intention of down the road doing this when they became old enough and decided they wanted to build their, this is where we're at.
Okay.
We're just trying to go about it the easiest way we can. So is the lot line adjustment after executed?
Yes.
So that this is all one parcel? One. It is on a tax map, yes, it's one.
Yes.
One tax number under everything. Okay. So, and, and honestly, originally, when I did it, I originally wanted it, so this was separate, but at the time, it was, uh, John Farrar was the tax, and he took care of it, and it wound up just all in one tax, but it never really mattered, so.
Saved us some money along the way.
Yeah.
Did your fair.
Yeah. So.
You have enough red footage. Any questions? Pretty straightforward.
Pretty straightforward.
Really straightforward.
Yeah. I have nothing. We have to do a public hearing, right? There's a scheduled public hearing, yeah, for next month. So, uh, the gentleman scheduled for next month, public hearing? You guys have traditionally voted to designate it a minor subdivision classified, so you could do that, if that's how you've been rolling in the past, it's not exactly legally required, but it's how you. Okay.
Always done it.
As you've always done it, so no reason.
I'll, I'll make a motion to classify this. My three lot, minor subdivision.
My second is? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? So it's classified as a minor subdivision, so schedule a public hearing like we just had?
Yeah.
Okay. So, let's see you.
July 1st?
July 1st.
1st? July 1st?
1st.
Okay. July 1st, right?
I had, I had one question, we're just curious. It states that it's not for building lots in Western County, in Department of Environmental. That's, they're just talking about the lots.
Yeah, well, that was.
It's, it's not this area they're referring to.
No, it's the lots, that was on the original.
That's what I thought.
When they originally subdivided it and sold it to us, that was just to kind of put that on, just because it wasn't the old Department of Urban. Yep.
That was.
I have one pretty awesome question.
Yeah, yeah, I got it.
Back lot, it has this strange, uh, topology. Was it mine from this side in the past? I have no idea how, how, what it was, but it is, like, in the back, it's a, it's a good drop back there. Yeah, I have no idea how that all. Because it must have been a long time ago, it's all grown up. Yeah, and I know for back then, since probably the late forties, early fifties, the people across the street, the Travels who are no longer with us, they owned all of it, so it was always watered. But, yeah, beyond that, I, I have no idea. Just wondering if it was natural or. Yeah. Or somebody was, even rather there in the.
There's an old rock wall that sits in the back.
The class. Yeah. Right off there.
You did both.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
The place you could have left there. Yeah. That's what we've been told.
Okay, thank you very.
Thank you. Do you need anything from me or?
Yep, I have your public hearings, that's all set, still coming out, barely next week.
Thank you for everything.
Yep, and then July.
Last meeting, we discussed revising the private drive code
to reference the state barcode.
Good night, thank you.
Everybody's going to go home and do some homework on it over the month. Have any comments to, uh, adding that, I think Tom, you were going to look into, see, you were going to look into, see if you could add that to the E-code?
Okay.
So there's no question, so we're going to add the state barcode for private drive to our local building code. Correct? To your, um, E-code? To your, not your local. So it's under roads, or I can't remember which section. So it's not your building code. That's all, that, I was just clarifying, it's not your building code, but it's to the town code under section entitled roads?
Private drive.
150. Oh, it's in the zoning then? It's in our zoning code then. In our local zoning law. Right. Local land use. So, then there's no question, we, you look it up in E-code, E-code 360, it'll be the same as with state fire. Okay?
Which is kind of what we've always done on there.
But it didn't refer to.
I'm just, it's, my dad just had one.
Yeah. Gotcha. Anything else to come before the board? Any questions?
Do you have any other items that you're thinking about for the code, or?
Is there anything about the multi-living unit? Other things you want to discuss?
Is there anything about the multi-living unit? Other things you want to discuss? I think that was also on, uh, left over.
Yeah, that's true. I forgot about that.
That's what we discussed.
We talked about that a little bit, but we didn't have anything specific to propose yet, or?
We talked about four more, four more.
Because the way the code is written right now. It's- The way the code is written right now, you're controlled by the density requirements for the zones.
Right.
So if you have a large enough lot, you could have a multifamily dwelling of a significant size in almost any zone.
Correct.
That's the way it's written right now. So you are limited by acreage. You can't put large multifamily dwellings on small lots, but if you have enough acreage, you could put a-
More than three.
Yeah, ten acres technically, but ten. Or, or five, depending on-
Or five.
Depending on which seven it was. It's one acre or two acres. Right. A single structure with that many units.
Yes.
Um, is it even limited to a single structure? Isn't it just, I think the code just says dwelling units per acre?
No, it's a multi, it's a definition of multifamily dwelling, so it would have to be a eight building with-
No, but I'm saying that the code allows, like, there's a space in the, it says a certain number of, like-
But it's not three or more if it's not a multifamily unit.
He's referring to, I think we already made recommendations in the town board about, um, discussing the multiple, the multifamily. We already kind of covered that, I think.
Yeah. Those, the, the-
This is not-
Recommendation would, which restricted us from counting non-developable land for this calculation wouldn't necessarily apply to this definition that we're discussing now. So there's no limits right now on, on a single structure. There are limits on the other ones that we discussed incorporating, which I don't think have been adopted yet or where.
So if you have a hundred acres in a residential area, you could put a hundred homes? Or a hundred, a hundred, a hundred, a hundred.
You burn the park.
If you have all the other infrastructure, you would need a water, transportation company, you would need a sewage treatment plant.
Your own pump station.
Yeah, well, it's a lot. It might not be financially feasible, but it's still possible. Okay, so we'll push this one down, I guess, too. Should be covered with a comprehensive plan, too. Hopefully.
It's-
It's got to be.
Well, I, I think I mentioned before that you'll, will probably end up making a number zoning changes after you complete your comprehensive plan. That doesn't mean you can't do updates along the way, but they're probably, after that, you'll probably see that you want to make a number of changes.
So what was, what was the discussion about, um, last month concerning this?
None. We just brushed on it.
It was brought up and we redefined definitions and some ideas of what we wanted to do.
We talked about it more tonight than we did a month ago.
I'm sorry.
I said, "We've talked about it more tonight than we did a month ago."
Okay.
Okay?
What are people's ideas on this? I'm looking at you.
Ultimately, there should be some, some restrictions.
Yeah.
Based on-
It's the same, it's the same idea. The idea, but it's one building instead of multiple buildings.
Right. I think there should be some restrictions. The way it's written right now is it's three or more.
Three or more, that's it.
Pardon?
Just three or more.
Yeah. I don't have it in front of me. I thought I did. The, the way we addressed the other one isn't necessarily going to work for this because you could have a hundred valid acres. You still have, you know, something that I think would concern the board. As opposed to the solution we had before, which was not counting wetlands.
Right.
That might also help, but it's not going to solve. So, uh, it stated right now. Good. Our chapter 150.
You're going on a dwelling.
Yeah. Dwelling unit, dwellings multiple with detached, semi-detached, or attached building or portion thereof containing three or more dwelling units all in the same lot. So that is permitted by special permit in numerous districts?
Correct.
And you are limited by the number of units per acre. So there is a limitation, but if you had enough acres, you could have numerous, you know, more than three units.
So are you going to write up the recommendations?
I don't know if they have one yet.
Okay. We need to work on that.
Detached, semi-detached, or detached?
Yes, could be any of the, so it could be an apartment building. It could be little cottages, you know. Any, anything.
So we'll work on that for next month. How does multiple little cottages fall under multifamily dorm?
It's multiple dwellings.
If you have ten acres, you can put ten cottages.
Detached, semi-detached, or attached.
You could put ten cottages on ten acres.
Wide open reach.
Well, five cottages on ten acres if you're up.
Yeah, depends on where.
Right.
What's the others?
Yeah, yeah.
So basically, it's limited by number of dwellings per acre and not attached. I mean, I would think at the very least it should be attached. At the very least. Because the multiple detached dwellings goes straight to the conversation we had last year about, just being able to block down as many multi-family, it was usually duplexes or whatnot. The same exact thing, so at the very least it should be all attached, I think.
Yes.
Without, I mean, to me that goes without question.
Changing some baggage and look back for next month.
Yeah, what else might you want to, I mean, I can help you with the language, but what else other than that are we hoping to accomplish? Because I think the other language would cover this as well. You're not, you can't count the-
Wetlands.
The wetlands. That would apply to this.
Right.
As well, so I think-
Can we not, can we not count the wetlands?
For density purposes.
Right, we did that, but didn't, what is the state doing? Aren't they doing it also?
How they're classifying wetlands is a whole different.
Okay.
You have to go to a class to catch up with that. I don't know, Jeff, if you've been keeping up on it or not, but-
It's a lot crazy, but-
The definition of a wetland hasn't changed yet. Uh, in New York, the size of the, of the recognized wetlands is going to shrink next, next year, not this year. And, uh, the maps that they have are now just suggestions. You have to show on your site plan any wetlands.
You're going to have, a lot of people are going to have to hire people to designate if there's a concern, whereas New York used to list them. They used to list them and it was or it wasn't to bring New York State. Now you're going to have to blow it yourself.
The burden of proof is now on you to prove it isn't one?
Right.
That sounds expensive for people.
You can have the state do it. But they have a limited number of people, so it might take you ten months to get a delineation. It's faster to get that, uh, local consultant to do it.
So it's, it's going back to this. So what we're saying right now is we want to change this so it's attached only.
That, that's the first thing I'll look at.
That, that's one simple change, but we started the conversation with that assumption anyway, and there's still some concerns.
Yeah, it turns out that's not the case, but.
Yeah.
Can we, or do you happen to remember exactly what the recommendation was for the, um, the duplexes? Because I think we drilled into this for six months.
Well, that language would cover this as well. I don't think it was only specific duplexes. I can bring that language.
I thought, I thought it was.
Only for duplex.
I don't think so. I don't think it was that narrow.
I don't know what you're talking about. If I wasn't here, so.
I don't, I don't think it was that narrow. I think it was a little broader.
Or is it just that the issue was raised because of the duplexes?
It's great.
Right.
Remembering that.
We didn't act, was it adopted?
No, they're waiting until the comprehensive plan was-
Okay, okay. I can bring that language back.
I, I would like, because we discussed-
My as far as I am.
Okay. It's possible that that language might already cover our concerns that were just raised. Can you send that up too, then? We can all review it? Yep.
Okay, great. Because I thought it was to, to restrict the number of buildings per lot to two, and that was only to build two single family homes, I believe. I thought that was what was discussed.
If that's the case, then I would still, right, only two single family.
But I don't know that he uses the word dwell, multi, like dwelling, like-
Such a matter, such a lot could be subdivided.
Subdivided, right.
Yeah.
It could be their only dependent lot.
Right, that was a safety valve for people who wanted that. You know, they could do the family compound like the first apple, or second apple, test those without subdividing if they wanted to, as long as they had enough space. That's the theory. That's just a safety valve, although that's not the restriction. The restriction was to prevent multiple, so even though that we have multifamily definition here, that language would knock out the multiple structures. You'd be left with one. Maybe that's why I had that on my head.
You know, apartment building.
You could have one, but you could still have one apartment, apartment building, and you still couldn't count, I'll bring the language back. You still couldn't count the non-developable acreage.
Yeah, I want to find out what, what the acreage was and I think we should be restricting the, uh, the number of units.
Right. We might have taken care of this problem with that proposed language already, but let's double check. Let's see what it says.
Okay, sounds good.
Are there areas where it should be a little different? Different zones? Because I think our, the, um, the multiple, the multiple unit language was a lot across the board.
Except for the village, uh, you know, except for your, where, in my opinion, it should be more dense. Uh, multi-
Yeah, in the village here, right?
For the multiple units on the same piece?
I handle this one dwelling unit per half acre.
I don't remember suggesting that. I thought we just had all, all, in all zones.
Multiple, multifamily dwelling, special permit, RR1, RR2.
And hamlet.
And hamlet, okay. It is in the hamlet.
Yeah.
I, I was thinking for a minute that it wasn't allowed in the hamlet, which is the place where I would say it should be. But right now it's special permit and site plan and RR1, RR2.
I was talking about our old recommendation, which wouldn't be in the code currently. I, I think we, we flanked it at all zones.
For the restrictions.
For the restrictions. So if for this, for multifamily, would we be looking at, changing it based on the zone, like in the hamlet?
You could certainly recommend to change where multifamily dwellings are permitted right now.
Is that something that?
I think we should, I, I think we should, the hamlet especially, right? Not or, yes.
Yes.
It is allowed there by special permit now.
Currently, yes.
With the new proposed. The proposed doesn't knock it out. It just puts limitations in of counting.
Okay, I guess I need to read what that, yes.
Okay. While we table this till next month and let's review what's been written.
Bring some power language and what our suggestion was as well.
Right. And you might want to tweak it.
And, yeah, and we need to tweak it. We'll tweak it. Okay? Sound good?
I had wanted to raise this issue last year, but again, it's on, we got to wait till the comprehensive plan. Our language for home business is rather restrictive compared to other towns. And just wanted to kind of-
Five hundred square feet within your house.
Yeah, five hundred square feet is kind of small.
Doesn't count out buildings. Right?
I don't really see so.
Can't keep anything buried in the garage?
I, that's, I wanted to kind of go through it because it was, I, more than one person has, um, raised that issue, you know. Five hundred square feet is very small. You know, it's like you-
That's a bedroom.
Huh?
Bedroom.
One in the wall. I think that's a big bedroom.
For the standard.
I live in a house that I got some, some of my time. You know, I'm sure there's plenty of little businesses that probably operate, and it's just like, I feel like we're making violators and criminals out of people and not criminals, but you know what I mean?
Double section.
It's not in the definition.
No. I, I know there was something, so there's some things that came to us a few years ago, and I think we had to make, uh, some sort of area variance for at least one or two people. It is like five hundred square feet, which is kind of, uh, you know, I mean, it's a question of is that a house? Is it residence or is it a business?
Yeah.
Um, but it's something that we're able to make area variance support. So if somebody comes and, you know, they've, you know, they have a good reason that they're doing it, and it's really still truly their residence, it's something that we can make an area variance support, which is pretty easy to do. It's not like a use variance, which is hard to do.
Yeah, I, I don't think we should eliminate the size entirely. I just, it seems like we're we're forcing people to, to come in for something they really shouldn't have to, but I know that definition's in there somewhere.
Home occupation.
Yes.
It's, uh, 150, 36.
Yeah, 150, 28.
No, 36 is accessory family dwelling unit.
Uh, so it was not, at least the one we were dealing with, was not an accessory unit. It was within the main house.
I, I remember there was one in the house.
Yeah, it's 150, 28. Item C, home occup-
That's home locks, not, which one are you talking about?
I'd like to look at all of them.
No, home occupancy is restricted to 500 feet or 25% of the gross floor area.
Okay.
Which, you're right, it's pretty small.
Yeah, I mean, it's, I'm also, like, how many people work from home now?
But it's within a house, so is it?
Or in a customary accessory structure.
Right.
So it could be a garage.
Case, could use a garage.
You can't do this.
Yeah.
I thought there were limitations on that as well.
Yeah. You talk about snap on the floor.
It came in front of us and-
Customary accessory structure.
So it's the same, the same limitation?
It's 500 or 25% of the gross floor area in dwelling.
And that's what it's limited to.
Yeah, so you'd have to have more than a 2,000 square foot home to have more than 500.
Yeah.
Which feet for home occupation.
You know, how many people are working from home? Probably in violation of this. You know?
But working from home is different than having business.
How many people are, how many people are working from home running a little business? A lot, a lot.
But our customers come. Our customers come. Why are they just running stuff out of their house?
I don't think it matters. It doesn't apply to customer door. It's just that you're not in the business.
Why not just limit it to 25%? Why state the square footage? So, I mean, if somebody's got a 2,000 square foot home, they're going to be capped at 500 square feet. Or if somebody's got a 4,000 square foot home.
They're limited at 500 square feet right now.
Right now, but why? Why not keep it at the 25%? Because the write-off for federal taxes is 25%.
Maybe that's where the 25% came from.
Yeah.
I don't know that you need it at all, but that's, that's a, a restriction, I think.
I just feel that we're, we're-
But who's coming?
Who's to blame?
People are just, people are just doing-
I, I'll, I'll say, and I'm not going to throw any names out there. I know two, two people that complained with me to me, and I'm not following up on it because that's not my job. And they're not, in my opinion, doing anything wrong, but they're probably in violation of this. So technically, they are doing something wrong. And it's just, it seems too restrictive. You know, it's a little town that a lot of people do work from home. A lot of people run little businesses. Most of them are no customers, no anything, but they're still technically violating, to me, what seems like a a bit of an overreap.
Even if they put up a, uh, 40 by 40 pole barn to run their business out of, they'd be in violation technically.
Forty by six, sixty-five.
It depends how much is the, the 25% of the 500 square feet still applies. So you, you know, you had 1,600 square feet. You'd be allowed 400 square feet. I'm just, I wanted to bring up the issue and-
Okay.
Remove the limitation completely. I don't think it would. Most of the time you don't even notice it's happening anyway, is what you're saying, so what?
I, yeah, you're-
You do have the other restrictions, which include that it can't happen, no alteration of the exterior. The principle shall be made. This changes the character thereof. No outdoor display of goods, outdoor storage of equipment and materials used for the home occupation. No one, two persons, other than members of the household shall be employed. No permitted sharing letting or subletting of space for use by others in the conduct of a professional trade or business. Especially not a street park and such provided. So all of that is still there.
Yeah.
And wouldn't necessarily go away.
I think maybe thought pattern behind this was sort of somebody didn't convert their entire house to a business. You know? Hey, I'm just speculating. Just speculating. But that would be one reason.
You know, somebody wants to, you know, cut grass for a living. You're, you're not jamming all that stuff in a 20 by 20.
No.
You know what I mean? I, I mean, I know of a guy that specifically didn't move into town because of that. And it's, everything's immaculate and landscaped. Just wanted to bring it up.
I wouldn't even call him home occupation. He's doing his work.
Right.
We've had people complain. We've had people complain, and we've had, we've had people remove.
Well, people often complain about, I mean, in that case, people often complain about the equipment that part of the business.
People have complained and people got in trouble over it, and it's, you know, totally in the interest of the locals.
You want to, the first, amending this?
I mean, we don't do it right now. I would, I would propose more discussion about it.
Okay. Put it on the agenda for next month along with the, uh-
Yeah, apparently we need to talk about the 911 marchers, you know. It's on, it's on minutes. Says we're going to discuss it.
Oh.
Is that R? Is that R?
Well, the fire department has asked that equal better mark their homes with, uh-
Is that R?
Huh? Doesn't sound like a planning board.
No.
Building code.
He just mentioned to us, because there was a payment, and so I was talking to Tracy.
I don't see how we need to do anything.
You know, with the new ambulance service coming in, they may not be familiar with the area, and they had a couple instances where a baby had an issue.
Trying to buy people's houses.
It's in the codes.
You're supposed to display it.
You're supposed to.
Yeah, it's in the fire code, and that's how it was referenced by our town code.
I mean, doing deliveries, I look for people there.
Yeah, but nobody cross references. No.
It's under the code, so we missed it out.
That's what we just adopted.
Right. So maybe like tomorrow night, we can make mention of it at the public hearing, just to, by the way. Anybody that's here, you might want to mail your mailbox.
That's one more, one more thing.
You want, there you go.
I just bought it, so I just have to put it up.
That's a good thing. It might even be a, not my place to say, but on the website, a reminder.
Yeah, yeah.
Take care of this.
They were just asking if you could mention them at the meetings, just so that
Okay.
People are listening, because with the, with the new ambulance services coming on and stuff, they are not going to be familiar with the people and the area, and you know, it could take them longer to find you, and if there's two houses up one driveway, and the mailboxes are at the bottom, they don't know which house is which.
Yeah, I think that was their, that was their main concern was
Yes.
Where you have a long driveway, and it serves two families.
Yeah.
Which, which one do you go to?
Yeah, so that, that's why he just thinks, you know, the more we make mention of it, maybe people will help.
I drove past somebody's mailbox three different times because they had nice little, actually really big gray letters on an old gray wooden signpost, and I was looking for it, and I did not, I did not see it.
People don't know how to read mailboxes anymore because it's Google. And it's Waze, and they're wrong.
Okay, anything else tonight?
Did we get any feedback from Wayne?
Well, we're going towards an hour here. This is very uncharacteristic.
You guys should kill them. You guys should kill them.
You can make a motion anytime.
Let's make a motion. A German meeting, I have a motion to a German meeting for a second.
Call a favor.
Aye.
Close, done. Have a good evening.
Yeah, I did make my. Make a little less luck.
There's not many. I see, I see.
It's getting tired. It's all done with the high back, so I don't really see that high. I didn't know I was just throwing. It's done, girl. Well, the rain. Soaks everything.
I think if you put it in now.
You know, we're trying to.
Services, yeah. What, what's your, what?
I might be done by the end of summer, so I'm gonna go.
Yeah.
My biggest worry now is just getting weather, time, that we have, apparently, been up today, so I might start short.